Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April 7th meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. We have a, we're kind of lightly staffed today with terms of members, but fortunately, we have a light agenda. So I would call the meeting to order. We have no minutes to approve this evening, but...
Wait, is it the next April, I mean, August 19th? Sorry.
But, yes, the problem with the August 19th meeting is neither Mr. Thomas nor myself were present at the meeting, so we can't validate...
We'll just push him off today.
Yeah, so we're going to continue the consideration of those minutes until the May Looking at the bills, tonight we have three bills from, all from Graves Engineering, relative to, number one, the Greenbrier Drive Site Plan Review, and that's in the amount of $4,221. The next, also from Graves, relative to the Falcon Farms subdivision on South Street, and that's in the amount of $2,049. And the next is relative to the Edgemere Crossing Project, also from Graves, in the amount of $429, for a total of $6,699. And I would remind everybody in attendance, as well as watching from home, that those review fees are obtained from the fees that applicants submit for review of their projects. So it does not cost the town any money. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for approval of those bills, as I just explained.
I move that we approve the bills and the amounts read into the firms listed by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next I would ask if there's any board member comments. Mr. Jerry?
No comments this month.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Bernie, does engineering or planning have any comments?
Just thank you to everyone who turned out for the Community Preservation Committee Public Forum last week. It was a, it was a big success. We had a lot of people out, so thank you for everyone who participated. I really appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is our first public hearing, which is a continuation from last month and a couple of other prior months, and that is the South Street Falcon Farms nine-lot subdivision definitive subdivision plan. Mr. Cahill, I understand we obtained a letter from the applicant today?
Correct. So Mr. Rashid Sheikh has requested to withdraw the application. We are hereby humbly requesting to withdraw the Falcon Farms definitive subdivision application without prejudice at this time. We appreciate your time and valuable feedback from the board, staff, and peer review firms, and we will include this feedback in our fresh set of plans when we resubmit a new application in the future.
Mr. Jerry, any thoughts or comments relative to the applicant's request to withdraw their application?
No, I have no comments. I think it's a reasonable request, given how long this has been going on.
Mr. Thomas?
I agree with Mr. Jerry. I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, then I guess I would entertain a motion to grant the request by the applicant to withdraw their definitive subdivision application.
I'd move that we accept the request from the applicant for the South Street Falcon Farms nine-lot subdivision public hearing to withdraw his application without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next on our agenda, I have a parking lot improvement administrative site plan review from J.J. Kane Associates, and the location of the lot, or the subject property, is 83 Centec Boulevard. And we have, this is administrative, it's not a public hearing. In conjunction with this site plan review, just for the audience's benefit, the applicant is looking to improve and pave and fence an existing gravel lot at 83 Centec Boulevard in order to store some vehicles and other equipment that, the vehicles will be used for utility emergency response situations. The appropriate drainage will be installed, and I think they'll be using the existing, existing detention basin that services the project for which we previously obtained site plan, we previously granted site plan approval. And I would also reference two memos. One memo from Mr. Truman, to Ms. Sheehan, the building inspector, and Mr. Cahill, relative to his comments about what J.J. Kane is looking to do, as well as Mr. Cahill's comments of, no, Mr. Thies, Tyke's comments of November 1, 2021, relative to the operation and maintenance and stormwater manage, management plan relative to that project. And I don't have any comments, but just wondering whether, Mr. Jerry, you have any comments about what the applicant is looking to do?
No, I think this is relatively straightforward. I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Again, my only thought is we incorporate by reference the comments of Mr. Truman and Mr. Ty. Bernie, did you have a comment letter, too?
Yeah, dated April 1, 2022.
I'm sorry, I didn't see...
You're not voting on an approval here for an administrative site plan review, you're voting on recommendations to the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
So if you would, please, in your recommendation, cite my letter. I'm basically recommending that the applicant, that they be subject to peer reviews of Graves Engineering. And then also, there was a couple other administrative notes, including the actual address. They're still citing the subdivision lot number on the plan. So nothing, not a lot.
It was not really a motion, it's just a recommendation.
Correct.
And we just incorporate Mr. Truman, Mr. Thies, and Mr. Cahill's comments.
Comment letters, yeah.
Everybody okay with it?
Yes.
So that's what we would recommend to Ms. Sheehan.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have the Greenbrier Road over 55 housing development, site plan approval and special permit. Now, Mr. Cahill, I understand that we've received some correspondence from the applicant.
Yes, we did. We received a continuance request to continue the public hearing to the May 5 meeting, Thursday, May 5.
Mr. Jerry, you have any thoughts on that?
I do not.
Mr. Thomas?
None, sir.
Now, my only thought was, I thought it was aggressive, you know, given the amount of comments we had at the initial meeting, that they thought they could be...
Back right away.
Back you right away for April, but that's okay. So I guess I'd entertain a motion to grant the applicant's continuance until the May, Thursday, May 5, 2022 meeting.
I would move that we grant the continuance for the, for One Greenbrier Road over 55 housing development located at One Greenbrier Road till the May 5 meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on our list, on the agenda, we have the proposed Collision Center Site Plan Approval, M.A.G.R.E. Holdings, 800 Boston Turnpike. And this is a new public hearing, so I would ask that if Mr. Thomas could read the notice.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, April 7, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of M.A.G.R.E. Holdings, 800 Boston Turnpike, excuse me, 777 Washington Street, Newton, Mass., 02460, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw, Section 7, Subsection F-3, for site plan approval by the planning board to allow the construction of redevelopment of the site and existing structure at 420 Boston Turnpike for a collision center, associated parking and infrastructure, as shown on plans entitled Site Development Plans in 10 Sheets, dated March 14, 2022, prepared by Kelly Engineering Group Incorporated, 0 Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass., 02184, stamped by David Noel, Kelly, P.E., and Stephen M. Horstfall, P.L.S. The subject property is located on the south side of Boston Turnpike, Westerly of Industrial Drive and Easterly of Oak Street, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 33, plot 079000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the Planning Department and Economic Development or on the Planning Board website.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Cahill, I understand we received a letter from the applicant?
Correct. Another continuance request to the May 5 meeting.
I guess I would entertain a motion, if there's any discussion about the continuance, I don't have any thoughts, but entertain a motion to grant the applicant's request for a continuance until the May 5 meeting.
I move that we grant the applicant's request for continuance for the site plan approval, proposed collision center at 420 Boston Turnpike, to the next meeting of the planning board on Thursday, May 5.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next agenda item are the zoning warrant articles for the annual town meeting. Mr. Thomas, if you could read the public notice.
Do you want me to read the legal notice and all the articles now, or do we do them separately? Okay. "In accordance with, in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 7, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw as follows. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning by law of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 2, definitions to authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive administrative changes to the numbering and lettering of the zoning by law, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7F3A, for site plan approval by the planning board to require proposed slopes of a certain height and grade to be subject to plan site, to site plan approval by the planning board, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 4, continuance of existing uses to update Section 4 of the Shrewsbury Zoning Bylaw to more accurately reflect state statute pertaining to non-conforming uses in structures, in particular for single and two-family dwellings, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning by law of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7D3, lowercase d, parking lot landscaping, to remove the requirement to provide screening between two or more lots when said lots are used for industrial purposes and are within the limited industrial zoning district, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Article, see if the town will vote to amend zoning by law of the Town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7, common driveways, to make distinctions between these, the requirements for residential and commercial common driveways regarding the number of lots and units served, or to take any other action in relation thereto. The complete text where applicable may be seen during regular business hours in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department, the Office of the Town Clerk at the Municipal Office Building at 100 Maple Avenue, and at the Shrewsbury Public Library at 609 Main Street, and online."
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Cahill?
Yep.
Do you want to run through these for us and the audience?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Thomas. Aren't you glad you only have to do that once a year, maybe twice at the most?
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for that. Article 30 is related to the continuance of existing uses. This is the section of the zoning by law that the Zoning Board of Appeals relies on most heavily regarding special permits. What this section is, what we're intending to do here is to update the, this section to reflect most recent case law as it regards single and two-family residential units. So there have been some changes in interpretation about what and what does not trigger a special permit, what's considered an increase in nonconformance and what isn't. I'd direct your attention to page three of four. I think that's where you really see the meat of it. I mean, you see numbers one through four there. These are all items that no longer, upon determination of, by the building inspector/ zoning enforcement officer, no longer would require special permits. Now, this is actually already, in fact, we're now putting it into writing in our zoning bylaws to update them because they weren't reflecting that very clearly. So this is, and I should probably note that myself somewhat, but I will give credit to Assistant Town Planner, Rowan McAllister, and Town Council, Stephen Madouse, who've done a heck of a lot of work on this to bring it into conformance with our recent case law. So number one, you can see here, I'll just go over them real quick. This is for if you have a lot that doesn't meet the required lot size, but everything else is in conformance, including anything you're trying to change on it. Maybe you're putting a deck on or an addition, but everything's in conformance, except maybe your frontage isn't, doesn't meet what's required, or the lot size itself doesn't, no longer would need a special permit. Number two would be conforming additions. So let's say your front yard setback isn't conforming, your deck is only 20 feet away from the front yard setback instead of 30 for the lot line, and you're going to put a new bathroom out back, that meets all the setbacks, the new bathroom, no special permit required. Still, you need a building permit. Let me make that very clear before I go on. You still need a building permit, just not necessarily a special permit. The other one, number three, is like-for-like replacements. I think we can all agree with that. If you have an existing nonconforming deck, say, a 12-by-12 deck, it's maybe 10 feet away from the rear lot line instead of 40, you're going to replace it with a new 12-by-12 deck in the exact location, same size, everything, no special permit. It's not considered to increase the nonconformity. And then finally, number four is demolition, demolition of a structure. So if you have something that's, say, 20 feet too close to a side yard setback, you're going to demo it. Now, it's 30 feet away from a side yard setback, still doesn't meet, you know, maybe the side yard setback requirement, and I'm just throwing around some round numbers here, doesn't need a special permit because you're not increasing that nonconformity. So for all these changes, one through four, I just went through, they're considered these days to not increase the nonconformity of a structure. So that's not to say there aren't other things that couldn't be done. And again, this is on single and two-family dwellings. This is not commercial or multifamily or anything, just state protections around those two uses. So are there any questions about Article 30?
Nope.
Seems to make sense.
Yeah, and it really, I mean, this is really going to help both in-house and with the Zoning Board of Appeals members to understand what these triggers are for special permits, and residents, I think, will be quite satisfied with these updates.
I think it'll cut down on some of the not-so-important hearings we have to have also.
Yeah, it should around the edges for sure. Moving on to Article 31. So this is, say, plan approval of, by the planning board for slopes. In this case, what's being proposed is slopes with a grade greater than 2 to 1 or 50% of steepness, right? So that's their grade, or steeper, and a height of 10 feet or greater. So I've been working personally with the director, DPW Director, Mr. Howland, and the town engineer, as we're quite familiar with on this board, Mr. Andy Truman, on determining what made sense for this. And I think if any board in town is going to be familiar with, I think, the need for this change, it's going to be this board, and its experience with slopes on different projects. So coming from DPW and engineering, it was agreed upon that 10 feet made sense for most small lifters and other vehicles, construction vehicles at ground level, reaching up, they said 10 feet, in their opinion, was a reasonable trigger, if you will, because over that, you start to get into much larger equipment, you start getting equipment on the slope, and you, they felt that that was a good time to have, a good place where you draw the line and say, at that point, anything greater than these two things? Well, it's and, it's not just one or the other. If you can have a 50% slope that's two feet high, that's okay. But if you go 50% and you're up to 12, 15 feet, what have you, greater than 10, it would trigger a site plan approval. And it allows this board to ask for things like geotechnical reviews, for example, to make sure that's a sound slope. And I think we've all experienced the difficulties in towns with some of these slopes. So that is Article 31.
So just to be clear, Bernie, because it just says disturbing a slope with a grade of 2 to 1, so even if that disturbance was to reduce the slope, it would still require...
Um...
Because the way it's written, it would suggest that even if you're improving upon it or making it less steep in this case, that would still require a site plan approval.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. We could, we could tinker with that language if you want.
Because I would think that we would not be opposed to somebody doing that, that would be...
Right. Let me work with Mr. Chairman to see if we can't come up with something more specific.
Okay.
I think you raise a, you raise a good point.
But would it make sense if someone's even touching a slope like that already? Would we want to see it?
Well, that's why I wasn't sure, from an engineering perspective.
Yeah, let me ask.
You felt like just disturbing it, even if it was to make it less steep, would create an issue.
Right.
Potentially create an issue.
And that's where I rely highly on the engineering division to weigh in about what kind of disturbance.
Right.
When does it become an engineering...
Mostly curiosity.
No, it's a great question. When does it become an engineering issue, right? When does someone, when does the red flag go up and say, that's too much disturbance? So, all right, I'll make a big note, and I'll get back to you for the May meeting on that, or sooner.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why we have these meetings. Anything else? Other two on Article 31? Nope. All right. Article 32 is very simple, I think, but important. It's empowering the town clerk to be able to change numbering and alphanumeric ordering of items within the zoning by law without having to go back to town meeting for a two-thirds vote. We've been making changes to the bylaw since 1967, and after many years, sometimes things get out of order. The table of contents don't match where the right page number is, or, you know, it goes A, B, C, F, and we've forgotten something after many years. Right now, to change any of that, you got to get a town meeting vote, which I think is a waste of town meeting's time and, quite frankly, everyone's. It's all non-substantive changes, it's simply ordering and making sure the numbers match up, the letters match up. And it would be recorded, it would be, as you can see here, they would consult with town council, and they also would keep track of any changes and when they were changed. So we thought that was a good modernization effort, streamlined.
That makes sense.
All right, any questions, Jay?
Nope.
Good on that one? All right. Number, Article 33, this is also another one I think this board is quite familiar with, kind of inspired by the most recent case down on Main Street, that common driveway with a board limited the units to, to four units on that 18-foot-wide common driveway. That is essentially what it's doing here. I took that precedent, and I've actually been out on that site, and having been on that site, I think the board was absolutely correct in limiting it to four units. If you go out there, I mean, they're fine houses, don't get me wrong, but in terms of traffic and capacity, I think, on an 18-foot driveway, I think that was absolutely correct. So what this does, no changes to commercial and industrial, it just kind of teases the two out, so they're now separate and not, they used to be together. So no changes at all to what we're doing for industrial, for common driveways. What does change, isn't even the lot number for residential common driveways, what it changes is the overall number of units on a common driveway. So you could have, as we saw down on Main Street, you could have two lots with a single family on each and one with a duplex, that gives you your four units, right, and makes it match how you will. You could do two lots with two duplexes, something like that, but not, not more than that. And I think, again, I think all credit to this board for seeing that a couple of years ago, and I think you go much over that and pretty much, I think, I think you're kind of flouting the intent of the bylaw, which is, you know, you're kind of going around the subdivision rules at some point when you're getting so many units. It's like, just build a subdivision road at some point, right? So this is our proposal here, we think it's good, and we think it's based on recent, recent case, but I think the board did a really good job on. And then just on the other side, one last quick note is, and this is actually, is in state, state court cases, case law, which is, common driveways that do service an industrial use cannot go through a residential zone. So you can't go through a residential zone to access and use a industrial, commercial lot.
I think there's something in that bylaw.
There wasn't. After you mentioned it, I looked through it, and what I found was in case law, and I'm happy to share it with you if I didn't already, it says something effect of accessways or access roads can't go through. So I checked with town council, does a common driveway count as an access road? And he looked through himself and did some research and found out that, yes, in his interpretation, a common driveway counts as an access road, so...
I thought that was in our bylaw, that you couldn't...
You know what? I did too, after you said it, and I couldn't find it. So I, we're going to put it in nice and clear.
Okay.
And then finally, is Article 34, which is parking lot landscaping, and this is just for limited industrial zoning. This is between, so right now, we require five feet of a landscape strip between lots that are industrial uses and in the industrial zone. Quite frankly, almost no one, like, it's really difficult, I might say impossible, but very difficult to enforce it. No one wants to do it, and we don't feel it serves much of a purpose because it's between, say, a truck stop and a manufacturing facility, and a five-foot strip is pretty much me lying down. I'm foot longer, taller than that, but you're going to get one bush.
Yeah.
And for our zoning enforcement officer to run around and try to enforce that from a site planner, to ask them to do that, we thought was, we did think was excessive. I will make very clear, it has to be in industrial use, as written, has to be entirely within the industrial zoning district as well, and this is to protect, to make sure that, what do you call it, screening between, required screening between industrial lots and residential lots does not change. It's still going to be required, none of that's changing. And same thing with the 15-foot of buffering between a lot and a public road of any kind, so that green strip would still have to be there. That's not changing. This is, this is just between, like I said, a truck stop, two different truck stops, you don't need that five-foot of greenery. Some will put them in anyways, right, they'll want to do that, but in most cases, if you go down Route 20, which is mostly limited industrial to the east or the west, you'll see that they're not there anyhow, and a lot of them are steep slopes, rocky stones and riprap and stuff, so we thought this was a good one as well. So any questions about that?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, that is the last of them. You can expect one more next month, and GFI and Attorney, I believe Attorney Donahue's coming to represent for another one about building height and industrial, and we won't be asking for a recommendation by this board, or I won't be until next month, May 5. So, and then Tim, I'll get you some updated language on that. So that's it for zoning articles. Mr. Acting Chairman?
Mr. Jerry, any thoughts, further thoughts on the zoning warrant articles?
No, I, outside of the question I had on Number 31, I think they're all pretty clear and straightforward and make a lot of sense.
Mr. Thomas?
I have no other comments besides the fact that I give the planning department a lot of credit for digging in deep and finding these things. These are not all just surface-level things, these are things that have to be looked into deeply, and I give you a lot of credit for finding them.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I agree. Then I guess I would entertain a motion to continue our consideration of the zoning warrant article changes for the annual town meeting until our next meeting on May 5.
I would move that we continue our discussion of the zoning warrant articles for the annual town meeting, as read by the clerk and elaborated on by Mr. Cahill until our next meeting on May 5.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on our agenda is new business. First is Centec North at 384 through 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike, extended concrete pouring hours. Now, Mr. Cahill, I understand that you have a statement you're going to read.
Yes, this is a, essentially a public service announcement about what is going on at Centec Park North. Over the next approximately nine-to-10-week period, beginning today, April 7, extended work hours are scheduled to take place on approximately 13 days for the building on 384, 386 South Street, and approximately a total of seven days for the building at 721 Hartford Turnpike. The purpose of the extended work hours is to allow for the concrete pouring of the floor slabs for the buildings and the tilt-up panels, and these will be on interchanging days, they won't be happening on the same day. One would be tilt-up panels, one would be floor. And now weather could impact this schedule. The requested exception to regular hours to facilitate the slab until while concrete pouring... to facilitate the slab and tilt while concrete pouring, uh, is an industry standard, uh, for several reasons. The strategy minimizes impacts on a butters by condensing the overall construction schedule to just, um, the weeks mentioned, ten weeks instead of months, um, and it improves the overall quality of the finished product. We also, the town requested, um, after it was discussed, the planning department, Town Manager's Office, and DPW discussed this, and before we gave our approval, um, we requested that North Bridge go door-to-door and reach out with letters notifying a butters with a immediately adjacent properties, and these letters were delivered on Friday, April first. And real quick, just to go over the pour schedule, when these days do happen for the floor slabs, the concrete floor flat, floor, gosh, can't say that ten times fast, concrete floor slab placement schedule, um, on those days, workers would be, um, arriving around five A. M. when concrete trucks, so the workers would be there by five A. M., so they'd start showing up as early as like four, four-thirty, um, waiting on the site for concrete trucks to arrive at five. Uh, pouring would take place between five and eleven A. M., um, as trucks would continuously come in and drop the concrete out, off. Uh, between eleven and six, eleven A. M. and six P. M., concrete finishing crews would be operating machine trowels. Um, and between noon and ten P. M., there'd be also a concrete finishing crew, um, saw cutting the floor slab. Regarding the tilt-up panels on those days, um, workers will be arriving by six A. M. Um, at six A. M., the first concrete trucks would start arriving. Um, between six A. M. and two P. M., concrete, concrete trucks arrive placing the concrete. Um, and between noon and ten P. M., concrete finishing crews will operate machine trowels. So, I just wanted to make that announcement. Is there any question from any of you?
I have no questions.
Okay.
The way they do it...
Yeah, for setting it, I guess. That's my understanding as well.
I represent Dauphine Concrete, which I'm not sure whether they're the concrete supplier on this project or not, but I know when they have big pours at, you know, some of these big projects, they continuous for hours.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next on our list, we have, uh, to discuss and vote a bond release for Old Stolpe Farm subdivision. Now, again, uh, I have no rec- I've been on the planning board since the last century, nineteen ninety-nine, and I have no recollection of the Old Stolpe subdivision. I'm assuming that all the roads have been accepted, and this is just...
That is...
Oversight by the developer looking for a return of a two-thousand-dollar, uh, passbook.
That's correct.
What, what, we don't even, you know...
I, we had the notes, and I did not bring it, but we did check on the road.
You checked on that?
We did check on the road.
Okay, and all the, all the ASB plans or whatever?
Yes, we have everything that's needed.
Okay, and I guess I would entertain a, uh, a motion, um, to, uh, release the remaining bond in the amount of two thousand dollars from, relative to the Old Stolpe Farm subdivision.
I would move that we release the bond in the amount of two thousand dollars for the Old Stopey, Stolpe Farm subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on, you have to sign anything, Bernie?
Um, no.
No? Okay. Next on our list is, uh, on the agenda is discuss and vote a bond release for nine thirty-nine, uh, Boston Turnpike Site Plan of Approval, which is the Pharma Can or Vera Life, uh, cannabis facility, the old Kawasaki dealership. And they're looking for a, uh, bond release in the amount of seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. I assume that they submitted the ASB's and everything?
We have everything we need.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion on that bond release.
I would move that we, uh, release the remaining bond in the amount of seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents for nine thirty-nine Boston Turnpike Site Plan Approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, next on our agenda, uh, I understand Bernie's going to explain it to us, um, uh, MVP grants, applications for, uh, the coming fiscal year, two of them, and what the town is going to be applying for.
Yes, so, um, one of them is, so it's municipal vulnerability, uh, preparedness, MVP stands for action grant. Um, the first one is, um, a proposal for a grant to, um, create a climate vulnerability and resiliency report, so essentially collecting, uh, climate data for, and then geo-placing it in the, in the town, so we know where the, you know, the heat sinks are going to be, where there's likely to be, you know, existing and otherwise in the future, predict them, um, flooding concerns, right? And to figure out where in town they could be. Um, and the idea with that is that, once we have that data, and once we know what we know, um, in the future, we'll be able to, uh, better target our efforts, um, to, um, either mitigate or, or what have you, these effects, um, in the future. So, better targeting, better, better applications in the future for other projects that may, may include infrastructure improvements. So, that's the purpose behind that one. The second one is a regulatory update for the parking requirements. Um, that is to, um, have someone help us take a look at our parking requirements to consider things like low-impact design, um, green design, uh, reducing parking requirements across town where they're not necessary. I think a lot of you have seen, like, the Staples Parking Lot. Um, I know we're getting a new tenant down there, but, I mean, even on Christmas Eve, it's never a hundred percent full, so, um, and, and maybe even look at incentives for these private, um, owners to, um, incorporate some of these low-impact designs on their site. So, those are the two. Uh, we're looking for the board's, um, endorsement and then signature so we can send it off with the application for the grant.
So, this grant does not, doesn't cost us any money to apply and...
Just my time.
So, I just wanted to clarify that. Any, any thoughts, Mr. Jerry?
No, I think those both sound like, uh, uh, valuable uses for us to be applying for the grant and, and support.
Mr. Thomas?
Oh, no harm done if it doesn't cost us anything, just your time.
Then I would entertain a motion to, uh...
Support.
Support, uh, our applications for the MVP grants, as explained by Mr. Cahill.
I would move that we support the MVP grants for climate vulnerability and resiliency and regulatory update for parking requirements, as explained by Mr. Cahill.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and just, uh, one other item of new business, um, and just for the benefit of anybody watching at home, is that it is our intention to endorse the Greenbrier Subdivision Plan, not the, uh, not the special permit and site plan approval, just the subdivision per- plan that was, uh, we approved a couple of months ago, so it was in furtherance of that approval, so. It's not approving the over fifty-five project by any stretch of the imagination.
Correct.
So, we're going to do that off-camera. Thank you. Uh, next on our, we have no old business, and I would just note, in terms of correspondence, we have a letter from Sharon Thomas, our town clerk, to Steve Boulay, our permanent chair, dated March thirty-one, uh, regarding eight-ten Boston Turnpike Special Permit, and that was for the parking, over-floor parking. And another letter from Ms. Thomas, our town clerk, to, uh, Mr. Boulay, dated April six, regarding two hundred, uh, Hartford Turnpike Site Plan Modification, a letter of no appeal. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to conclude this evening's public hearings.
I would move that we adjourn the April fifteenth?
Seventh.
Seventh, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Close enough, Tim.